...for the city of Prattville this evening. At this time, we do invite you to stand for our pledge of allegiance and I will give the invitation with you. I pledge...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you join me in prayer, please? Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and we thank you for the privilege of living in a country and in a city where these processes take place. You've given us participation, you've given us choice, you've given us freedom, and we thank you for all of those privileges. However, we come before you humbly recognizing that no matter what, you are still sitting on the throne, King of Kings, Lord of Lords. We recognize that you hold ultimate authority tonight. We pray that you would guard, guide hearts and minds and words, help the candidates to relax, help them to be their very best self tonight, to put themselves forward in the very best way possible and to just be at peace, to know that we want to see their best, we want to see what they have to bring to the city of Prattville. Help them to know that whether or not they sit on this dais, that there are many, many other ways to serve as, as all candidates will not sit here with us. We just pray that whoever is not sitting will also find ways to serve and to be a blessing to our city. Thank you for those who have come out to listen and to participate. I pray that you would bless our night as we go through this with your wisdom, with your help, with your guidance. We love you so much, Lord, and we recognize the privilege that we have to do this. In Jesus' precious name we pray, amen. Madam clerk, will you call the roll for us, please?
Councilor Jackson.
Here.
Councilor Merritt.
Here.
Councilor Wiley.
Here.
Councilor Strickland.
Here.
Here. Declaring a forum present, I do call this meeting to order. Tonight, we will hear from qualified candidates that have already applied to fill the vacancy here in District One. We ask for a few things from those of you who are here tonight in our audience. We ask that you silence any electronic device and that you not talk during the times that the candidates are presenting. Those who do talk and have devices go off will be asked to leave the meeting when you have our security from the police department here tonight, and they would escort you out if needed. If you do need to get up and leave the room for another reason, please wait for the candidate to finish their speaking and then enter or exit as the candidates are out. The candidates' names will be drawn by the council to decide the order in which they present. The candidates will not be asked any questions. They have already been advised to come in ready to present and answer the predetermined questions that were sent to them. Councilor Jackson, we're ready. Will you draw the first name for us, please? Will you please go get Mr. Burton to join us?
Evening. Madam President, Councilman.
Mr. Mayor. I'd say good evening to you. My name's Ken Burton. I live on 711 Eva Ciel Drive. First, I'd like to tell you that I really wish I wasn't here tonight. None of us wish we were here tonight. Weeks ago, we lost a good man, friend, and councilman. And Albert Strickland loved his family, his friends, community, and church. So it's a sad evening to have to meet like this. He's missed and will continue to be missed by all of us here. We're fortunate to have him in our lives and our community. I'd like to take now to thank you for the opportunity for me to visit with you and introduce myself. We have three children who were raised here in Prattville. They're the fifth generation to be a part of this city. Both my grandparents, both sets of grandparents, moved here in 1940. We brought a couple of my great-grandparents with them and made Prattville our home. And my granddad, Robert Nichols, was one of the town doctors. And he helped build the hospital up on top of Whitunka Street. And some of my family say that I was one of the last babies born there in 1970. I'm fact-checking on that. But my grandmother, Rowena, was a stay-at-home mom and was an active member of the community. My other grandfather, Paul Burton, he had a little store downtown Prattville. And then became a deputy of the Sheriff's Department. And later became and retired as Chief of Police in Prattville. His wife, Lois, was a teacher at the primary school. She probably called a lot of us that could be in this town now. Fast forward a few years, Stephen C. Burton, my parents were both raised here, obviously. Steve retired as the senior partner of Jackson Thornton Company. And while he was there with Jackson Thornton, he had the chance, an opportunity, to open a satellite office. And he chose Prattville, downtown Prattville, as one of the locations that still resides here today. My mother, she retired as a schoolteacher from the public county system. And they were very active with our community. My wife, Laura, who I've been married with for 32 years, she is a schoolteacher at the primary school that seems to run through our family school year. And she too has been involved in civic groups. But through the generations, my family has been blessed by the city and many benefits that it has provided for us. I've been blessed with a long 30-year career in the cotton industry. And a few of my roles are relevant to this position as District One, as councilman. For a few years, I had a chance to work for the National Cotton Council, which is the lobbyist group for the cotton industry. It represents the industry both globally and in Washington, D.C. As the executive director, I helped create and manage the U.S. Cotton Trust Protocol, which is the industry's sustainability program. I visited many people through the supply chain when creating the board of directors. And through my contacts, my communication, and getting to know people, I was able to add to the board a vice president from the World Wildlife Fund in D.C., a vice president of Levi's Rouse, a vice president of Tesco, which is like the target of Europe to Europe, a vice president of a nature conservancy. This board consisted of those folks as well as cotton farmers, cotton gin, a manager, cotton merchandiser, and a cotton cooperative. A very diverse group that was created. And this group created a program that provides the data that tells the consumers, investors, and brands of retailers that U.S. growers are treating the environment with soul and their workforce with high standards. It's an exciting part of my career to be involved in that project. And it's exciting to, as a lot of you have seen, being involved in projects and seeing the end product of it. I mean, it's just cool. I like being involved in projects. But about three years of my career, 27 years of my career, I was a, had the opportunity as a cotton merchant to buy and sell cotton from the Carolinas to West Texas, and then also sell cotton to domestic mills and international mills. I've been working for a Fortune 50 company managing their U.S. cotton division. My office is located in Love, Texas, and I work remotely in the woods here in Prattville. It's great. And I have a conservative approach with my team on buying and selling cotton. It's important that we're good stewards with the money, with investors' money, as we're running the operation, because it's a publicly traded company. Managing this multimillion-dollar operation can be compared to the city managing $110 million budget with taxpayer money. As a manager, twice a month, I have to provide projections for the cotton division's profit and loss statement. These are provided to the accounting department in Chicago as well as the sales division in Geneva, Switzerland. And accuracy is a key in providing these projections. Otherwise, it feels like steering a sailboat without a rudder. And I'm sure with a lot of government, city government operations, you guys have to work on projections for a lot of things. But through the years, I've had opportunities to serve Prattville and Otaku County in various capacities. For 18 years, I've been the chairman of the city's commercial development authority. And through this committee, while working with city council and mayor, we were able to bring the ass pro shock to our community. Every time I walk through those doors, I'm reminded of the impact that this store has for our city. My committee was also instrumental in bringing the Alabama Department of Public Health Training Center and the Administrative Annex. I think that was here in recent years, maybe with some of you. Again, when driving around East Prattville and seeing high hotel occupancy due to that training and administrative building out there, it's pretty impressive. And again, it's, it was a great, reminds me of a great decision made by all of us. Both of these projects are exciting, and again, it goes back to seeing the end result of a project that you're invested in. I was nominated and appointed to the 911 Board. During that term, we were able to expand the call center and stress improving technology to ensure that our community would be cared for as quick as possible. I've served with the Otaku Education Foundation and the Central Alabama Community Foundation. I'm chair of both of those, and both of these organizations fund needed grants to our schools and local nonprofits. As a board member, it's rewarding visiting with advocates and learning about their needs and especially funding them. That's the exciting time when you hand out a check. I'm an active member of the First Methodist Church and of the finance committee as well as the staff marriage relation committee group. I was about to finish being the chairman there. As a person seeking this position, I want to point out that our leaders, you guys, have done a great job in economic development. As our city moves forward, leaders need to concentrate on sustaining what we have and continue to have a balance for what's to come. We should continue to attract manufacturing facilities like Hardy Clink, James Hardy Company, or International Paper. We should continue to attract professional career or white collar jobs, a lot like what we've seen with the public health training and administrative annex. And finally, the city should continue to support our schools through projects and continue to support the Central Alabama Community College. The continuation of the education order cent tax is a must. And I think our city should consider public-private partnerships. By creating these, this could provide educational opportunities, an aquatic center, a museum, library, and/or an event center. All these ideas are directly related with our earlier comments about economic development. We need to continue to protect and serve our citizens and keep them out of our debt while providing new projects and facilities to the public. And in turn, this would attract businesses and continue to crack those successful economic development allies. And so in closing, I feel that I have a skill set that I can offer to the community and to my district. I'm a good businessman, communicator. I'm a people person. My kids don't like going to the grocery store with me. I talk with everybody there, even if I don't know them. My family loves the city. I love the city. I'd like to see it continue to move forward. I'm excited about what the future holds. And I recently read a quote by General Colin Powell, who quoted, "Always focus on the front line children, not the rear rear rear," and that's what I think Prattville should be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. No, no, I mean, we're going to go. We're moving in. She's waiting for us to finish notes. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Ready? Okay. No, she was waiting on us to tell her she pulled up into her notes. Dispossess someone else. We need the phone silencers for this.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Sir? Yes, sir. A lot of people in here. All right, so my time's started, so I'll get going. This evening, my name is Wes Crane. I live at 2212 Windhaven Drive. With me and my wife, I've been about 21 years. Moving by myself, I grew up in Montgomery. So after school, I went off and went to college and lived in Auburn for a little bit. Came back and started a job with the Montgomery Fire Department. So at that time, I knew that I did not want to live in Prattville anymore, that I wanted to live in the preferred community. I wanted to come to Prattville. That's been 28 years ago. So just a little bit about myself, far as history, far as I've had a good amount of community involvement. So me and my wife have been active members of East Memorial Baptist Church. My wife taught here in Otaku County for over 20 years. She's been at the State Board of Education since then. So all my children came through the public school system here in Prattville, all the downtown schools. All three graduated, thank goodness, from high school and had gone off to colleges and get other degrees and now work. Some of our engagements that we have participated in, in Prattville, is numerous. It can go back to the many, many swim meets that we went to, wrestling meets, football games, baseball games. I was a Dixie youth umpire for a little while. So when I lived in Hollybrook for a little while, we started a neighborhood watch that after a small vehicle break-in, we put that together, kind of brought the neighborhood together. So we moved from there, moved to Winfield, where we live now. Things that I've been involved in since then also is, at this time, I am the, I'm a captain with the Pelham Fire Department. I am the fire marshal for the city of Pelham. So I've been in Pelham for 18 years, almost 19. And I stayed in Prattville because I love Prattville. I don't want to move to Pelham. I want to stay here in Prattville. So that involvement has also brought me back several times. 2002, when the dirty building caught on fire, I can't, as a fire, can't even help to control that fire with Prattville Fire Department and some other fire departments. So in 2011, when the tornado hit, Kmart in that area, I put on a fire department t-shirt. I wasn't working for Prattville, I was working for Pelham. Came to work. So we started doing some searching, doing some rescues, and I participated in that. Last year, 2023, I was at the fire station in Pelham, tornado hit. Got on the phone, called Prattville, hey, that's my home. What do y'all need? We need help. City of Pelham sent two fire trucks and myself down here, and we did searches all night. So we've contributed to, and I've been an active member of Prattville for many, many years. And, you know, one of the questions that y'all gave us is basically, what kind of issues do you see Prattville having? You know, I think that issues, that issues with an S, is a little much. I think there are some issues that we could do, but I believe there's one that we could wrap it all up and kind to put it all under one umbrella and solve several problems. And that is revitalization of our downtown area, right? If we could start in our corridors over Lake Main Street. Main Street, what was it here for first? It was here to bring visitors to Prattville and also to get our residents to and from the areas they needed to go to. Well, Main Street is not the only corridor that we have anymore bringing people into Prattville. We have several other corridors. If we can tackle that revitalization together and let's revitalize some of these areas, and when I mean that, I'm talking about buildings, how they're built, when people rebuild them, what they can rebuild with, what they can't rebuild with, what they can do, setbacks, lighting to protect public safety, you know, different parts of the building. And we can do that with our property maintenance code that's been adopted. All we have to do is, as a city council, come up with a overlay district. What it does is it's another zoning that's over the existing zoning that we have, and we can set a constitution on basically what they can and can't do, and what we can do to improve our areas, right? Sidewalks, we're doing a great job. So what this does is be enforced basically by the building department and police department. But not only are we going to enforce it, we're going to get incentives. Incentives to help you bring your property up so we can get what we want people to know Prattville should look like. We got a lot of visitors that come through the interstate, 65. So what do we want to offer them? We can offer that revitalization by planning a zoning overlay district. Overlay district means in these certain corridors where it's heavily populated, you've got to maintain this zoning and these regulations to keep up, all right? So, you know, to add to that, you know, how would I do it? Like I said, we can enforce it through the building and police department, but mainly what we need to do is offering incentives. What kind of incentives can we give you to help you bring that position, or bring that up? So basically, you know, bless you. To, you know, to wrap all this up, you know, why do you think, you know, another question is why do you think I'm the best candidate? Well, me standing before you as the fire marshal, I've already worked with city council, I work with architects, engineers, other city officials. I've also been all over the state. I just was in Auburn during the last tornado. So what we do is we'll send out a team of people that are in these positions that can affect the approach disasters and stuff. I'm a part of that team. So I have experience. I have experience with city councils. We have a mayor, city manager system set up in Pelham. I've dealt with city manager, I talked to her today, talked to her on a regular basis. So I have these relationships already built. I have that understanding of how local government works with zoning and stuff. Not only have I done that, I've worked with, like I said, engineers and architects. When people bring plans to us and say, hey, we want to build this in Pelham, hey, Hoover wants to slide this into our city, you know, what can we do? What can we collaborate with? The fire marshal and the building official are the ones that sit down and we go through the plans. Not only can I go through the plans, then I got to present. And who am I presenting it to? Stakeholders, building owners, not only the building owners, the business owner. So I've been there to help make these decisions, and that's why I think I would be the best candidate for this position. I have run for this position before. I love this town. I think that I can make a difference. I have a, I have a lot of interest in staying in Pelham, wanting to be, you know, Pelham proud. I'm still, hey, the preferred community, I love it, right? But I do more like to be a part of the city council, and I've made this known by applying and I've actually run before. I want to thank you for your time, and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. As a reminder, everyone, please silence any electronic devices. As a reminder, everyone, please silence any electronic devices. Any other disruptions, we're going to ask the police officers to escort you on.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, my name is Donald Johnson, and I'm honored to be here today as a candidate for District One seat on the proper city council. I'm currently a Blue Collar, working professional at an international paper down in Prattville, by a focus on production, but I also serve as the chairman of the safety committee, chair, you know, the training committee, as well as co-chairman of the Millby Safety Team. Uh, recently, uh, I've been working in the role of the safety coordinator for our department. And in these roles, they give me a unique perspective on the importance of safety and well-being of our workplace and as well as the community. Beyond my current job, before that, I have a passion of mentoring, mentoring youth, and working in the community. As a former high school and college football coach, I've learned the value of teamwork, discipline, and leadership, which are qualities I strive to install in people that I work with from day to day. Uh, I'm actively involved on advisory committees within my church, within uh, youth services, and I still venture through brother, brother organization, where I help guide young men to have a attractive, better life, brighter future. Um, my commitment to community service runs deep as a value uh, that was installed by my parents. Don and Shadell, uh, they installed those values in me and my brothers. They taught us uh, that truthfulness comes from serving others. I've worked tirelessly behind the scenes in our community, not for recognition, but for the genuine desire to make a difference. As a candidate for District One, as a proper city council, I want to continue the legacy of service, ensuring our community thrives and the voices are heard. LaDessa and I are also dedicated to raising our son, Donald the Third, these three. Um, with the same values and service of responsibility, together, uh, we can build a stronger, more connected, transparent, and thriving city government body uh, that our community or the future generations. Uh, to go into some things on why I feel, or what I feel are some important matters within the community. First, I'd like to address the infrastructure, alright? Our city roads, bridges, drains, wastewater, public facilities, all in need of significant attention. We must, uh, I feel that we must prioritize the funding for the repairs and upgrades to ensure the safety and the efficiency of our infrastructures. This is not uh, about fixing potholes, it's about creating foundations that support the communities as we grow, which we all know that we're growing very rapidly. Every time we, we turn a corner, there's new neighborhood going up, and that's great for our, for our city, for the growth, but there needs to be better infrastructure in the road. Um, we've all noticed the great sidewalks going out on the east side of town, we've known some uh, better stoplights being put up, things of such. Um, but, we need to expand, we really need to expand on how we are are, how we are going to get a hold of the growing uh, infrastructures for the residents in this community for a better quality of life. Um, another thing I feel is pressing in our uh, community is economical development, right? Um, we cannot uh, ignore the pressing economic challenges that we have in District One. Many of our residents are, we live out of what we like to call the food desert because we're, we're on the outskirts, we're in the city, but we're on the outskirts. And uh, we live in what we call a food desert, where it's, it's hard to access healthy and affordable food uh, in a timely fashion. Additionally, we have uh, seen minimal business growth in District One. And one thing I'd like to do is to be able to come up with a plan to develop more economical development within our district as well as the city. Um, additionally, we have, um, to combat this, we must develop a targeted initiative that attracts new businesses, support the existing businesses that we already have, by creating initiatives for grocery stores, service providers, and restaurants to come to our neighbors and neighborhoods out of District One as well as the entire city. We can assess, we can enhance the accessibility and create jobs. Furthermore, we should actively engage in local entrepreneurship, providing resources and mentorship to help succeed and in turn stimulate our own local economy. By doing those two things, I think helps what our problems are, which one is the rapid growth that we have. We are the preferred, preferred community for a reason, so people want to live here. So we need to make sure that we have good roads, good bridges, and good facilities for people to be in. And for the people that like to live on outskirts of the city, in what we call the country park, we need to ensure that they have ways to go and get healthy foods. You know, we have the Dollar Generals here and there, but they're not always stocked. We have a Family Dollar, but it's gone, right? We have really good fire service and really good police service. We need to make sure that all these places are accessible. That's why, one big thing I keep talking about is infrastructures, right? And, and the last thing, the last thing I think the city really wants and the city really needs is transparency. Transparency from the council, from the mayor, from the government bodies in this county, right? Transparent, uh, transparency is paramount, and, and is our ci- our citizens deserve to be informed about the issues impacting their lives, our lives, right? These all of us in this room, from the city finances, the pending litigations, the uh, better oversight of city operations is crucial for us uh, to foster an environment where ci- where citizens feel empowered and encouraged to come to their local government leaders. This means holding, um, to meet, this means holding regular town hall meetings, communicating successful financial records, and openly communicating challenges that we face in our community. It's important that we, as citizens, are able to depend on the people that we voted as councilmen. As a citizen and as a father, by focusing on improving infrastructures and promoting economical development in District One and ensuring transparency, we can create a thriving Prattville altogether. Together, we can address these most important issues and build stronger communities. I ain't got but a little time left, so in closing, in closing, I'm excited to stand before you today as a candidate for the proper city council District One seat. I recognize that I may not be a current or former employee, or I may not have as many deep running ties, but, where some people may say that as a disadvantage, they may see it as a disadvantage, I see it as a challenge. I've accepted every challenge that's ever been thrown at me my whole life. I firmly believe that the city council that I aspire to serve with will be fair and practical in the selection process, and I'm committed to putting myself out there, ready to work tirelessly for the betterment of the community. As a Blue Collar professional, working at international paper, I understand the, the values of hard work, dedication, teamwork, and community service. My journey in leadership began many, many, many years ago. All was started in mentoring youth. And that's why I got into education, got into coaching, so that I've had the opportunity to impact my community behind the scenes. Now I'm ready to step on the forefront and run the race swift and sore like eagles. And be there and understand that people need us councilmen because we're their voice. I'm driven to serve on this city council, not for recognition or accolades, but to continue my lifelong commitment to my community, our community. I believe our city faces significant challenges, and I want to be a part of the solutions, ensuring that every resident in District One and the city has a voice. My main focus is not on race, black, white, or brown, but green, prosperity. Prosperity for our community, prosperity for our city employees, prosperity for us as a community as a whole. I want to reiterate my commitment to serving District One and an entire Prattville community together. I believe that we can address the challenges of infrastructure, promote community, promote economical development, and be transparent for all residents with the support. I will work tirelessly to ensure that every city, every citizen in this city, has an opportunity to thrive. Thank you for your time, I look forward to the opportunity to serve you both. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
For those of you that don't know me, my name is Laura Strickland. And before I address the specific questions that the city has asked me to answer, I'd like to take some time to share why I believe I'm the best choice for the vacancy in District One and on our city council. Several key experiences in my life have prepared me to be a well-rounded and effective voice on the council. First, it was my father, retired Air Force lieutenant colonel, and brought me to the River Region thirty years ago. I have a deep understanding of the unique challenges uh, our military families face while stationed here, as well as the hopes and needs of our military retirees and veterans who either choose to stay in Prattville or return to Southern Carolina. In addition, I grew up with parents who were self-employed business owners, and they own both residential and commercial properties. And this has given me a unique perspective on the important role these property owners and entrepreneurs play in the city's economy and the relationships that they seek with our local government. For the past twenty-five years, I have had the privilege of teaching English and theater here in Toddland County, forming lasting relationships with colleagues, parents, and students. Many of those students are now adult citizens in our community, contributing to our district as professionals and raising families of their own. They are doctors, lawyers, teachers, uh, welders, hairstylists, and even serve as our city's firemen and women, police officers, and public servants, including candidates for city council. My husband has twenty-five years of experience as a teacher, coach, and athletic director as well. So as a longtime coach's wife, I also deeply understand and appreciate the role that sports and athletics play in the lives of potential Prattville. The city has clearly tried to foster that, which I do support and appreciate. My time and energy have also gone toward building our theater arts community, which our city also graciously supports. And I have built connections and partnerships between our county schools and our uh, city arts organizations. I say all this to tell you that my family and I have a deep investment in the city of Prattville. I've lived in my District One neighborhood for over two decades, and my children are graduates of our local public schools. Moreover, in the last six years, I've served on the board of directors for both local, local, excuse me, and statewide arts organizations, where I've had the honor of taking on leadership roles. These experiences have involved planning events, managing budgets, resolving conflicts, and making important decisions that affect others. While some of these decisions were challenging and sometimes uncomfortable, I've always been guided by what was best for the organization as the primary thought. I believe the same approach applies to being a city council member, making thoughtful, balanced decisions in the best interest of the people I represent in District One and of course, the entire city as a whole. So I just turned fifty, I'm not mad about it. Because one of the things that age gives you, if you're really willing to look hard at yourself, is knowledge of your strengths and weaknesses. I know that one of my strongest qualities is my ability to work with people. I've been successful in listening to others with an open mind, and I'm willing to change my mind if the world supports doing so. I also speak to others as I would like to be spoken to, and I am excellent at helping others to work as a team. No matter how knowledgeable or capable you are, the ability to collaborate effectively is really what is essential to making progress forward. So now that I've introduced myself and given you an idea of my experience and strengths, I'll move on to the second question the council asked us to answer, which is this. What do I feel are the most important issues facing Prattville? So I've been thinking for weeks about how to answer this question, and I've realized that the most important issues facing our city are the same issues that most of America is facing right now, no matter where they live. These issues include employment, housing, education, and safety. People in Prattville want to have access to good jobs and affordable housing. They want to send their children to local schools that deliver a quality education in a secure environment with people who care. They want to feel safe when they go about their day, whether it's to the grocery store or the local concert by the creek with their family. These are foundational things to maintaining the quality of life that we all value here in Prattville. So the last question asked of the candidates was what solutions we would propose to solve these issues. Quite frankly, I don't have any. And I am quite aware that that does not sound good when I say it out loud. But, I am a realist, and I am a citizen who understands that many of the ways to improve Prattville are presented to the city council as a series of choices. Where do we spend this money? How do we spend that money? What effect does this legislation have on these members of our community? We must decide where and how to allocate resources, how zoning laws and permits are managed, and what regulations are most effective in addressing the issues. and what regulations are most effective in addressing the issues of housing, education, and employment. Now, that is not to say I don't think there are any solutions. It's just that the issues of employment, housing, education, safety, they're not singular problems um, to be solved, and then we just tie them up and forget about them, and that's not how it works. These issues, which again are the issues in most communities, are always changing. The minute we solve a problem, and we say we've solved it, we're going to find a new problem. So it is an ongoing, living thing. However, I do feel that many of these problems can be mitigated by the city government by trying to take a proactive approach, um, rather than a reactive one. And in preparation for this open interview, I did do a little informal research. Uh, I discussed the housing market with a couple of local real estate agents. I spoke with some county school administrators, I looked at some census numbers for what was available. Basically, what that let me know is that our city is growing. And while this growth is exciting, it also makes planning for the future, especially in terms of housing and employment and education, more critical, excuse me, more critical than ever. So if we don't plan now for that, we wish, we risk being unprepared for future demands, which could lead to more reactive, um, choices as opposed to, you know, planning further out. And we want to have strategic decision-making. So these decisions are complex, and there isn't always a quick fix. The goal should be to take thoughtful actions to prevent any problems from arising. So the other issue with solving these city issues is that they're all tightly intertwined. So, for example, if our schools can't hold up to the standard that military families have for their children, they will choose to live somewhere else. And from what I understand, that's already happened, to at least a small degree. Uh, if we don't have a safe community, people will not be interested in buying or renting homes, um, in our city. If we don't encourage companies and small businesses to come to Frappel and stay, then they will move to other communities where employees have better options of where to live and where to send their kids to school. So ultimately, the City Council is a legislative organization, and I would like to add my voice to this council, which if I'm doing it right, is the voice of the people who live in my district. My experiences in real estate, athletics, education, the arts, and my connection with both city and county organizations make me well-suited to fill this vacancy, um, until the next election, where the people of District One can again decide for themselves who they would like to represent. Council members, I appreciate your consideration and appointing me to fill for District One. Thank you.
Laura Lee, could you tell us the next person coming in?
Mr. White.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me first by introducing myself as many of y'all know. My name is, I live on Six Twenty-One West Fourth Street. I am a retired Army Major. I served twenty-five years, eleven months, seven days in military, in four combat deployments, and I had a few peacetime deployments. So why is that important? I have a spirit of nation building, from planning to on-the, on-the-ground operations. Not do philanthropy activities such as feeding people, experiencing homelessness, advocating for those who do not have a voice, and assisting income-insufficient families with food, scholarships, clothes, school supplies, phone books, laptop computers, toiletries, shoes, monetary assistance, and helping ver- veterans in various ways. So what do I believe are the most critical issues facing Frappel? And how would I, uh, support and, um, fix those issues? Well, one of the major issues facing Frappel is infrastructure's challenges. Affordable housing, how would we do that? By getting grants from the local government and doing, and also using our banks for the Community Re-Investment Act that's funded by the federal government. Better broadband throughout all Frappel. You know, when we, when the COVID-nineteen hit, we found out that we had a big connection problem. Thus, we had to use the buses in our, the lo- local areas so we can get, um, all our kids connected to, um, to the internet. How do we solve this? We talk with both our state and federal representatives in the center to secure funding for more updated and affordable broadband for all citizens, not just the some for all. This equates to more educated scholars, better ways to teach our scholars, and better incomes. The next issue and challenge would be better land management. Ensuring we place measures in, in place to control the flooding of properties in both District One and District Two. If it is not controlled and managed appropriately, we will be faced with future challenges such as sinkholes that we've seen throughout the United States and throughout the world. Adequate mental health services to address our growing normal mental health challenges. The hospital and, and the metro jail is not the answer to addressing our mental health challenges. Therefore, we need to build infrastructure and, and, and tackle that challenge. How do we do that? We go back to the city, go to the federal, and ask for funding, write grants. Wastewater issue. The Biden administration gave us ten years to get rid of all their pipes. We need to be thinking, we need to be forward-thinking instead of being, um, reactive thinking. Can't wait till the ten years to get these things fixed. Improved electrical grids, I heard me saying this several times, especially when we got the American Rescue Act money. We need to improve our electrical rig grid. Every time something as simple as wind blow, part of Frappel is out. We need to invest in better electrical grids. From cutting down power line, um, cutting down trees that's closed the power lines to updating the electrical grids so that all lights won't go out every time we have a wind blow. The other thing is lack of transparency by our local politicians. We need checks and balances. That's the reason why our forefathers thought of the three branches of government, so we can check and balance each other. Right now, we have five point six eight million, uh, million-dollar litigation. I'm gonna tell you that we're gonna have worse than that with the metro jail. Once the lawyers get through coaching, all those prisoners and coaches, their employees, about that boat that's over there, we're gonna have way more million dollars that we're gonna have to pay out. But no one's thinking about that. To lead me to the other, think ahead and address future concerns. Economists and labor economists experts predict a shrinkage of eighty percent in construction workforce in the next decade. Therefore, we need to create a twenty forty-five plan to address this need. However, we need to do an honest assessment of our current infrastructure, which includes repairing, updating, showing up, and keeping, and keeping our hospitals, because we know in rural areas, a lot of hospitals are closed. When you look at the things that, that I just mentioned, there's a direct co- correlation between substandard jobs, housing, health, and reliable workforce. We know the future of healthcare is in prevention, not in management. And housing is a crucial component of preventing healthcare for the country. Do you know that Brown, that Brown University did a study, especially here in Alabama during the COVID, and it was a direct link between housing and health? Say, well, look at how many people on respiratory system, uh, walking around here with respiratory bag. Look also at how many people that you sleep at the machines, CPAP machines at night. I know I'm not the only one that smelt the unit camp coming through the house, and I guarantee you, I done paid for the most expensive filter and still can't keep it out. So we as a city need to work on trying to get them to upgrade their missions and make sure they pass the initiatives. We need more structural activities for our young people. We need to bring back the boys and girl club, summer jobs with the city and the county. And we need to be intentional in doing that, because a lot of our kids getting in trouble. We need to do more activities with our kids. Reason why a lot of these kids can't even go into the military because they overweight, can't pass the APFT. I had that same issue when I was in the military. I was a commander over in Korea, in Camp Humphreys to be exact. And most of the soldiers I got in, they was not prepared and ready to fight. And motto in, in, um, in Korea is, "Ready to Fight Tonight", because you never know when North Korean might come over to DMZ. Lastly, we need to update our aging signal lights. The lights on Fourth Street and Court Street are outdated and consistently hold up traffic. These outdated li- lights cost people time, and in today's world, time is money. As we are as bad, uh, as we are not as bad as some cities outside of Alabama. No, but yes, we can do better. There's always room for improvement. Especially for what our citizens pay in salaries compared to bigger cities that pay comparable salaries for them. That's it, that's it, employees and politicians. When you know better, you do better. If we do more of this, this will lead to transparency, checks and balances. This will lead to our transparency, which will lead to rebuilding trust and confidence of our citizens. If we had these checks and balances, and we were doing it correctly, we wouldn't be in the five point six eight million-dollar litigation. If we were doing the checks and balances, Metro Jail wouldn't have more, and we have potential losses. That's gonna cost us m- more millions of dollars in, in the long run. As I conclude, I'm not saying I'm the best candidate. However, I am a person, that's a, that's a professional soldier, well-educated, and does many things in our community out of my own pocket. All the things I told you philanthropy, I do that out of my own pocket. Yes, every once in a while, I get, I get, um, some, um, some, um, donations, but it don't equate to what I put in. And the other thing is I'm always a learner, I'm a student. Going to different cities, talking with politicians, and at different roles give me the opportunity, opportunity to do that. I'm a senior vice commander for the DAB Chapter Twelve in Montgomery. I'm also a part of other nonprofit organizations that give me the opportunity to go to different cities, go to different states, and talk to different politicians. So I thank you for your time, I thank you for allowing me to come and present why I would be a good candidate for District One, for a great man that led District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. The council will take a five-minute recess, we will return.